Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm.
Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee. And discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Laura and this is your flash briefing for the week of March 24th. City council will meet for regular session Tuesday nights, six in council chambers in city hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the council debrief newsletter. Which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. Join District Three Councilmember Cindy Rader and Mayor Pro Tem Bethel Lopez for a town hall on April 3rd at the training facility at the Lee Summit Police Department located at 10 Northeast Tudor Road. Receive an update on major projects and visit with department representatives. This is an open forum. Unable to attend, the meeting will be livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel. The city's Wellness Commission is promoting healthy habits with March being National Nutrition Month. Keep an eye out on our Facebook page for helpful tips and tricks to lead a nutritious lifestyle. And stay safe and informed with LS Aware. The city's free alert system designed to keep residents and businesses informed of emergencies such as weather events, road closures, and certain non-emergency events. The city can quickly send messages via phone, text, or email depending on the preferences set up by the user. Users choose how to be notified and what information they wish to receive. Sign up at lsaware.net. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Officers en route, nine fourteen, armed drone.
Have you ever been driving around Lee Summit and wondered, what's that going to be? What's being built there? Wow, that went up fast. The Development Minute is here to help. Highlighting some of the newest projects in Lee Summit, Missouri.
Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen is coming to the former Lion's Choice at Summit Orchards. The fast food chain known for its fried chicken and spicy chicken sandwiches is scheduled to open in early 2025. Local authentic Mexican restaurant El Toro Loco is coming to Summit Woods Crossing Shopping Center. The restaurant will occupy the former On The Border location and offer dishes like street tacos, enchiladas, and fajitas. El Toro Loco will be opening in early 2025. Fua Noodle Go had a soft opening where the former Pepper Jack's Grill was located in Summit Woods Crossing. The establishment is currently serving a selection of Fua noodle soups, appetizers, and daily specials. Fua Noodle Go will fully open in 2025. The Quick Trip located at 1001 Southwest Blue Parkway has begun its redevelopment. The squeaky clean car wash is being demolished to accommodate a new 5,300 square foot QT building and a planned phased rebuild. The current location will remain open during construction. The new QT will open in 2025. Discovery Park, the 3.9 million square foot mixed-use project located off of Northwest Colburn Road and Northeast Douglas Street is underway and its first phase, the Village, is being graded. Town Place Suites Hotel by Marriott will be one of the first builds coming to the Village. The hotel will feature spacious rooms with amenities including full kitchens.
That's it for the Development Minute. For more about upcoming projects, visit cityofls.net.
This is the best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here.
I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
The city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard. We feel valued. We feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing. It's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence.
I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself.
If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
It's extremely rewarding overall. Just the fact of working with other council people and other volunteer commission members that are so involved and care so much about making this community better. It sort of kind of lifts your own spirits by being involved in that kind of environment with other people like that. For many years, I was a typical resident, raising a family, going to work. In many cases, leaving the city for employment. And went through a leadership class through the chamber. Learned a lot about our city and learned about all the great amenities and resources we have. And was asked if I was interested in volunteering on a commission. I said yes, and kind of the rest is history. I've just completed my third year on city council. And so looking forward to finishing strong with this first term and look forward to continuing to serve this community. My thing is that there's so many talented people in this community that believe in so many different initiatives. And for me, one of the big reasons why I decided to run was that as a residential taxpayer, I felt that we can always increase the business tax base of our community. And that's kind of been a big part of my involvement on city council is to encourage and promote and make it easier for development to occur, commercial development to occur in our community, to increase that tax base and diversify that tax base. And so I think we've made significant strides the last few years. We've had a collective, great group of council members and mayor where we've really truly accomplished a lot of things that there were somewhat kind of stumbling blocks for previous councils. Working new contracts with our union personnel, firefighters, and police was a big accomplishment for us. The fact that we were able to push along some initiatives like the downtown renovation for a market, a farmer's market. It's been a great experience to be part of those meetings, to help nudge it. And to the point where now we have a developer involved is just a great feeling to have been part of that. And others, I mean, I think our park system, we've continued to support our park system to add a new community center, for example, that we negotiated with metropolitan community colleges. So I'm proud of all those things and just being able to help make a difference in many aspects. I love definitely spending time with my family. We have three daughters and they're all fairly active and some in sports and other extracurricular activities. But for me, I love being outdoors. I love the trails. I love riding my bike and I love playing golf. And we have awesome amenities and options within our community to have that kind of a lifestyle. This June will be 25 years that my wife and I have lived in Lee Summit and have raised three daughters in this community. I know this city has incredible talented residents that come from all different walks of life. You know, very diverse group of families in our community. That it's so rewarding to be involved on a government level or some kind of civic commission or committee that you get, in many cases, you get out of it more than you put in. And I truly live by that and I believe that.
Pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to serve, grant us wisdom, clarity, and fairness in our decisions. May our words and actions reflect respect and a commitment to the good of our community. Amen.
Welcome, everyone. I now call the March 25th, 2025 Regular Session Number 32 to order. May I get roll call, please?
For Hodges?
Here.
Present.
Prior?
Here.
Present. Here.
Carlisle?
Present.
Aye.
Mayor Baird.
Okay. Forum has been established. I am not Mayor Baird. I am Bethel Lopez. Pinching for Mayor Baird. He will not be here tonight. Councilmember Shields will not be with us tonight either. They're both out. With that in mind, we will proceed with the agenda. And eventually we'll introduce our guests here this evening. We have some guests. But for now, let's proceed and get the approval of the agenda. All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Hodges and we have a second by Councilmember Carlisle. That's not popping up. Or is it not? The computer is jammed. There we go. Okay. Agenda is approved. Motion passed. Please record the vote. Takes us to... Approval and Consent Agenda. You have a motion made by Councilmember Carlisle and a second by Councilmember Rader. Please cast your vote. Working now. It's working. Right. Motion passes. Seven zero. Please record the vote. That takes us to the Council Roundtable. Member Hodges.
I just wanted to give a shout out to the troop 4195 that is here tonight. Just thank you for attending and for meeting with us before the council meeting.
Great, welcome. Where are you all from? You guys have a long history. Thanks for being here. Hopefully you learned some things. Welcome. All right. So we will proceed. Takes us to... Proclamation. And this will be read by our clerk this evening. Going to read it and I was going to come up. I don't know. Is anyone here to receive the proclamation this evening? Theater in Our Schools Month. Not, I guess we could still read it and just acknowledge them publicly and hand them the proclamation later. So, yes, please do so.
Whereas the city of Lee Summit is proud to support the students and teachers in our community and various programs in which they participate and teach. And whereas Theater in Our Schools Month is a national movement where thousands of students and theater educators join together in raising awareness of the impact that theater has on our schools and community. And whereas the theater programs at the high schools of Lee Summit have last provided over 600 students the chance to participate in more than 30 productions ranging from major musicals to small one-act plays. And whereas research has demonstrated the student performance on academic test, positive behavior in school, graduation rates, and educate, sorry, and engagement in community citizenship activities are all better among students and theater groups when compared to the general student population. And whereas the theater programs have a significant impact on the community of Lee Summit as over 15,000 people attended school theater productions in the city each year and thousands of dollars are spent at local businesses to purchase products and supplies needed to mount these productions at the local restaurants and at the local restaurants before, after show meals. And whereas Lee Summit High School, Lee Summit North High School, Lee Summit West High School, Bernard Campbell Middle School, East Trails Middle School, Pleasantly Middle School, and Summit Lakes Middle School all present major production, productions throughout the school year. Now therefore, I, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Lee Summit, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as Theater in Our Schools Month.
Great. Even though they're not here, let's clap publicly. We definitely want to acknowledge them, for sure. You know, obviously the arts and in this case theater is very important to our community. And typically, they are present and I'm not sure why they're not here this evening. But we are acknowledging them and we'll make sure they'll get their proclamation. So thank you for reading that. And that moves us on, on the agenda. So that takes us to public comments. I believe we have one person, Mr. Rob Stitt. If you come up to the speaker, either one of them, the mic, state your name and address.
Yeah, my name's Rob Stitt. I live at 1629 Northeast 20th Drive in Lee Summit. And I know everybody's pretty aware of the issue that I'm concerned about. Has to do with access to the Colburn Road Library. And I just wanted to kind of reiterate the ongoing frustration that this hasn't been solved. You know, I made some calls today and talked to people. I'd made calls back in December and talked about it. And it was like, oh yeah, we're just going to issue a permit and it's going to take three weeks to get it fixed. And it's been like three or four months and nothing has happened. And every time I've called, there seems to just be this tremendous amount of like lack of communication. It's like them and them and somebody else that nobody seems to understand how to get in the phone and just resolve an issue. And then also a lot of ducking about, yeah, we know there's a problem. We know there's a problem, but there's nothing we can do about it. And it's like, you know, in my view, you know, it is, I mean, right now, I guess it's a case of easements and things like that that have to be negotiated with the private parties. But I mean, in my mind, this shouldn't ever have gotten here, that the first shovel should never have been turned. The permitting should have never been allowed to continue on like the median in Colburn until they had all of these issues with the library access solved. Because that's the major, every day of the week, that's a major traffic generator. And it's completely inconvenient thing. State law in Missouri is really wild. Everybody making U-turns or it's all illegal there to make U-turns, but they're happening anyway. And it just makes a dangerous traffic situation. The fact that four months on, we still aren't any closer, it doesn't seem like, to getting this solved is really frustrating. The fact that so many people seem to want to dodge responsibility when, like I say, they should have never permitted, let the permit be issued in the first place without that being solved. It's pretty obvious that's a problem and has been one. And you know, I guess at this stage, all I can say is suggest that, you know, if the library and whoever else can't... know, if the library and whoever else can't reach an agreement, then the city needs to look at condemning a couple of chunks of land to just make this happen, and it should be happening with great urgency. So I just wanted to reiterate my concerns and, you know, let my city council people know what's going on. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and your comments. Appreciate that. All right. We will proceed with the agenda. We have a resolution. Our clerk can read this one as well.
Too much tonight. Resolution Number 25-06, a resolution authorizing the mayor to appoint successor directors to the Summit Orchard's Community Improvement District.
Great. Thank you. Resolution has been read, and we have a motion by Councilmember Carlisle, and a second by Councilmember Hodges. Cast your vote. Motion passes. Seven zero. Please record the vote. That wasn't me. All right. That takes us on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Emergency Ordinances. Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I move for second reading Bill Number 25047, an ordinance approving an agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and Motorola Solutions, Inc., for the purchase and installation of updated radio microwaves and a radio tower, including associated costs, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same on behalf of the city.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Funk, and a second from Councilmember Hodges for second reading of Bill Number 25-047. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes. Seven zero. Please record that vote. Thank you. Councilmember Funk.
I move for adoption Bill Number 25047, an ordinance approving an agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and Motorola Solutions, Inc., for the purchase and installation of updated radio microwaves and a radio tower, included associated costs, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same on behalf of the city.
We have a motion from Councilmember Funk, and a second from Councilmember Carlisle.
Mayor, prior to finishing that motion, I think it's important to note for the record, since it wasn't read, that this bill does contain an emergency clause. That's why it's being read twice and passed on to... and passed tonight without having gone to committee. It's important to note that in the... for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Hader. Appreciate that. We have our attorney here present. So unless there's any other questions or comments, please cast your vote. Passes. Seven zero. Please record the vote now. Thank you. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. I move to second reading Bill Number 25-056, an ordinance determining and declaring the necessity of acquiring for public use certain land right-of-way, permanent easements, and temporary construction easements for roadway, water utilities, improvements, and all work incidental and subsidiary thereto associated with the proposed M291-North and US-50 Highway Intersection Project, authorizing the city manager and his designees to negotiate for the purpose of acquiring the necessary interests in land, and authorizing the city attorney and his designees to institute condemnation proceedings if such interests in land cannot be acquired by purchase through good faith negotiations and containing an emergency clause.
Great, thank you. We have the motion made by Councilmember Hodges, and a second by Councilmember Carlisle. Before we call the vote, we'll have Mr. Park make a couple of comments.
Just a brief explanation. This acquisition is in support of a public improvement project at 29150, a project you are all very aware of, one that has both state, federal funding, as well as partnerships in the school district and highway patrol troupe. This is one property. I say one because you see listed two, but we have reached agreement with Perkins, which is on the south side of the interchange, so there's just one remaining to acquire, and this acquisition is necessary for that project to proceed.
Are there questions or comments? Or hearing none, please cast your vote. Passes. Seven zero. Please record that vote.
I move for the adoption of Bill Number 25-056, an ordinance determining and declaring the necessity of acquiring for public use certain land right-of-way, permanent easements, and temporary construction easements for roadway, water, utilities, pedestrian amenities, additional infrastructure facilities, other public improvements, and all work incidental and subsidiary thereto associated with the proposed M291-North and US-50 Highway Intersection Project, authorizing the city manager and his designees to negotiate for the purpose of acquiring the necessary interests in land, and authorizing the city attorney and his designees to institute condemnation proceedings in such interests in land cannot be acquired by purchase through good faith negotiations and containing an emergency clause.
That was a mouthful. Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Hodges, and a second from Councilmember Carlisle to adopt Bill Number 25-056. Any further discussion? Seeing or hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes. Seven zero. Please record that vote. Thank you. Takes us to Action Item Number Eight, Proposed Ordinances, First Reading. We have Councilmember Rader.
Thank you. I move to advance to second reading Bill Number 25-057, an ordinance approving a fixed-based operator agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and the Midwest Avionics LLC to operate as a fixed-based operator, FBO, and perform aircraft, airframe, power plant, avionics, repair, maintenance, and the inspection services at the airport, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Rader, and a second from Councilmember Funk to advance Bill Number 25-057 to second reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes. Seven zero. Please record that vote. Thank you. Councilmember Carlisle. Here's a little slow.
Bill Number 25-058, an ordinance approving a fixed-based operator agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and Summit Flight Academy LLC to perform flight training and aircraft rental at the airport, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same. B, second read.
I have a motion from Councilmember Carlisle, and a second from Councilmember Hodges to advance Bill Number 25-058 to second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes. Seven zero. Please record that vote. Thank you. Now takes us to Item 8C, Councilmember Lovell.
Thank you. I move to advance the second reading Bill Number 25-059, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a ground lease agreement buying between the City of Lee Summit and Hangar V LLC for a period of 20 years with options for four additional five-year terms for the continued operation of Hangar V located at the Lee Summit Municipal Airport, and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Lovell, and a second from Councilmember Carlisle to advance Bill Number 25-059 for second reading. Any discussion? Yes, Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I just wanted to know, I just wanted to be... maybe Joel could come up and explain this a little bit. I know he's ready to do that. I just want everybody to hear the beautiful things that are happening at the airport, and why.
Yeah, so this particular ordinance is for a ground lease for an existing hangar at the airport. The hangar itself is in the process of being sold, and the new owner... or I'm sorry, the purchaser has requested to get a new ground lease started. The initial ground lease is good for a period of 20 years with four, five-year renewals, so they would have it for a total of 40 years. Since they built the hangar, they're only five years in, and you know, normally we would do a reassignment of the lease if they were a little... if they were halfway, maybe three-fourths the way through their agreement, but they're only five years in, and so we're willing to just reset the ground lease. So they'll start with a fresh 20 years with four, five-year renewals. And they have agreed to the exact same terms as the, you know, the current owner, so there's no difference in the ground lease itself.
So where is Hangar V located?
Yeah, I thought you'd ask that, and unfortunately I didn't bring a illustration, but it is on the northwest corner of the airport. It's one of the larger... well, it's probably the largest private hangar that we have. It's around, I think that leaves around 34,000 square feet of space, so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks, Mayor Proton.
Thank you. All right. Any other further questions? Seeing or hearing none? Let's go ahead and call the vote. Please cast your vote. Passes. Seven zero. Please record that vote. Thank you. Takes us to action item number... Bill Number 25-060. Councilmember Prior.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I move to advance to a second reading Bill Number 25-060, an ordinance approving change order number one to the agreement with Kissit Construction Company, Inc., for the SIP lining and LCRs as part of the II removal SIP lining, manhole rehab, and LCRs FY '24, project number 962-2, for an increased amount of $638,000... $683,610 for a revised agreement amount of $1,917,532, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Prior, and a second from Councilmember Carlisle to advance Bill Number 25-060 for second reading. Any discussion? Yes, Councilmember Prior.
Thank you. What is an II removal?
Mr. Dunning?
Yeah, INI stands for inflow and infiltration. So think of pipes in the ground, and if they have cracks or joints offset, it allows stormwater to get into sanitary sewer lines, and that's not good. So it's... INI is inflow and infiltration.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Other questions? Please cast your vote. Passes. Seven zero. Please record that vote. Thank you. All right. Takes us to public hearings. I am going to close a regular session and open a public hearing on application number PL 2024-302, Preliminary Development Plan, Express Stop Convenience Store, 3394 Northwest Village Park Drive, Engineering Solutions, LLC applicant. Would all those wanting to speak and provide testimony, please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk. Mr. Slid, welcome.
Evening. Matt Slish, Injuring Solutions, 50th Southeast 30th Street, Lee Summit, Missouri. I have some helpers with me tonight, the architect and the developer's agent as well, so if we have any questions I can't answer, please feel free. This project is generally located at the northeast corner of View High and Third Street. It's in a development that many, many years ago, we've brought forward a rezoning and a concept plan for the P-mix of this entire area, and the Meridian Apartments was kind of the one first thing that kind of went out in that area, and everything else has kind of been slow to progress. So this is another one of that View High corridor that we've kind of been hoping to get going, and so this is the first step in that process. So this is the Ignite master plan up in that area. Again, kind of talking...
Our screens are not up.
Oh. Unplugged everything left.
Plugged it all. Give us a second, please.
Oh, you're fine.
Okay. We're having computer issues. Give us a second, please. Eyes. They try to pull it up on their own. Eyes. You guys okay?
Yeah.
Oh, it's back on. All right. Ready either way. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Carry on.
All right. So not much. This was just the screen we were talking about, kind of on a location perspective. You're seeing that View High corridor down to the south. We have the rec facility, CVS, McDonald's, Taco Bell. This, again, is that conversation of kind of heading north towards 470 on Chipmunk, kind of that corridor of improvement. Ignite comp plan shows that area as a P-mix zoned area, kind of as part of that New Longview continuation going north to something we talked about last week on the red area, the CP2s, we kind of continue north towards 470. Currently, the site is Zone C, P-mix, that we did back with a concept plan a number of years ago, again, with that village at View High, overall kind of project of a mixed-use type development, but the Meridian Apartments was the first and only thing that's been built in there so far. This is that original plan that we had talked about back in that time. So on the southerly side of it is Third Street, westerly side is View High, so to the west is Fred Urbana's Golf Course, and it was just a mixture of uses of commercial, residential, and pieces that we're still kind of working our way towards. But this is the initial site on the westerly side in between Kessler and Village Park Drive that exists to the south of the Meridian Apartments that are set up there on View High. The site is 6,700 square foot of a convenience store with a drive-through around the north side of it, 12 fuel dispensers accessing off of the south access drive of Village Park Drive. The landscaping is your standard landscaping, nothing asked for modification or differences of it, but a healthy amount of landscaping on the west and southerly boundaries. Obviously to the north, we're waiting for what the development will come to, the north and east, assuming that that will continue the development and screening in that area. Elevation view of the project, this is something the planning commission had us kind of go back and work on in our initial building elevation. They didn't feel met the character of the neighborhood, so we've gone back and worked on it, created a mixture of uses of materials, colors, that we believe are inconsistent with the area. So this would be the north view, and it's kind of a view that will be in the future development area of the lots in that area. This would be the easterly side, kind of looking back towards the apartment project areas. We did have a neighborhood meeting that we held and have not heard from anyone. No one showed up at that meeting. So with that, we'll stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you. I guess we'll have Mr. McGuire come up.
Staff presentation. All right. Good evening, Council. Shannon McGuire, Planning Manager. Please enter into the record Exhibit A, List of Exhibits 1 through 17.
Please enter Exhibit A, List, Exhibits 1 through 17, into the record. Thank you.
All right. As the applicant stated, they are seeking approval of a preliminary development plan to construct a gas station with fuel cells for a building about 6,600... or 6,668 square feet. It is located on a one-and-a-half acre site there on the western bounty boundary of Lee Summit there at Northwest Village Park Drive and View High Drive. The site is generally surrounded by P-mix to the north, east, and south. Across the street, there is Kansas City, but it is a golf course currently. It does sit about a quarter mile north of the New Longview development that everyone's familiar with. The subject site is located in the New Longview Activity Center. Some of the identified uses for that activity center do include the commercial, industrial, and residential options, and one of the established goals in the comprehensive plan for that area is to stimulate continued economic growth and investment by the private sector. So the subject applicant... So the subject application does meet that goal by continuing to invest into the city and the community by developing this long vacant property. So as the applicant stated, the property is currently zone P mix. That happened in 2016. The original conceptual site plan did show this area or this particular lot as office med or medical office. But the overall comp plan did, or conceptual plan, did show it as office, retail, restaurant, and did have a grocery store located there. So the retail is consistent with that. So as you can see here, this is kind of how the site will lay out. There was neighborhood meeting, and as the applicant stated, no attendees. And staff has not received any comments in favor or against the project as a whole. So during the January 23 Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission did express concerns on the previous elevations that they had proposed. This was the original elevation they proposed. They didn't feel that it felt fit the architectural style of the New Longview area. So they asked the applicant and staff to work together to kind of identify something that had a little more fit with the character of the surrounding area. So with that, staff went back with the applicant. We kind of determined, went to take a look, what do we have out in New Longview? The material, we looked at the materials and architectural styles out there. It's a little bit eclectic. We got some corporate architecture with the McDonald's and the movie theater, as well as historic storefronts, you know, kind of a modern take on that historic storefront. So we also took a look at what kind of materials we have out there. It is, again, a mix of different materials, everything from bricks, stucco, some lap siding, metal panels, stone and glass. So with that, staff did try to identify some of those overarching characters of the neighborhood and to help draw some of those elements into the proposed elevation. So as you can see here, the applicant has kind of drawn in the brick colors of the surrounding area as well as the colors of the other elements and a roof line that's more consistent what we see in the commercial buildings out there at New Longview. So with the updated elevations here, the Planning Commission did feel that it fit the character much better. So with that, with the conditions of approval as outlined here and in the staff letter, the application does meet the goals of the Ignite comprehensive plan and the requirements of the UDO, and I may answer any questions you have at this time.
Great, thank you. Does Council have any questions for staff or the applicants? All right. Councilmember Pryor is first in line.
Thank you. Does the owner of this gas station own any other gas stations in Lee Summit?
Does not own any in Lee Summit, but he does own throughout the community, metro as a whole.
Which ones? Or what cities?
Could you come up to the mic, please?
Yeah, this is Dave Meyer, 212-52W, 119th Place, No Lethal. I represent the owner. He does have several other stations. His most recent one is 175th and Flom in Overland Park.
Answer your question.
Do you guys typically sell like all the vape products and everything that some of the gas stations sell?
That is strictly up to whatever is allowed. If it's a problem with having it in there, then it's something that we usually don't put in there. It just depends on the jurisdiction and what they allow us.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions?
Exactly how far from, so I see a house, so I see several houses. Is it just literally like right across the street from the house that's pictured in that one slide?
It is across the street. So the existing house is sitting on the south side of Village Park Drive. The intention when did the development is that house was going to go away through the time and process. They've obviously reoccupied the house and they're there, but they are across the street. They were noticed, and we haven't heard any commentary from anybody on that side.
Okay, thank you. What neighborhood, is that New Longview right there, the whole neighborhood, or what neighborhood?
No, so the project. If you go back and look in here, this is Third Street. So this is like the CVS, the LP Mart, McDonald's, Taco Bell. Back behind it is the B&amp;B Theater. Back behind it is those new multi-story townhomes. Back behind it is Kessler. And then continue another probably half mile, quarter mile, that's where New Longview and all that starts to begin. So this is that intersection of View High and Third Street where you have Hawthorne Bank and then the school to the west of it. So the residential portion's a significant amount away. There is the existing house that sat there in a row of a few houses that are starting to kind of start to come down, like the one on the corner has now been removed. And there's probably three, I believe, left outside of that existing one that's right directly below it.
So a lot of these will be removed eventually?
The plan always was, so the original developer that was doing this plan, that had the plan, you had the original approval, this concept plan rezoning owns one of those homes. And so the idea was is those would all be incorporated. The current ownership is the bank, and the bank owns everything kind of in here. This site and the home were owned by a separate developer. And the separate developer sold the house and then now is looking to sell this remaining lot.
So where the current house is that's right next to it, it's zone commercial already?
It is zone P mix.
Okay.
Like with the overall development, yeah. Because originally, it was part of the development concept plan, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. All right. Councilmember Lovell.
Thank you. So we had shown in the plan, office, medical, retail or grocery. This might be for staff, I guess. So would we consider gas any one of those four uses that we had identified for this space?
Retail.
Okay. Is there any concern that there is a gas station like right around the corner? And that's probably for developer, but we have a gas station just around the corner. So as I think of, you know, I'm trying to think through this as a, you know, in that district and planning and thinking about what are good uses for this space, like it seems odd that that would be a good spot for a gas station with one right around the corner.
So typically, you do see competing businesses, think of your Home Depot lows. They tend to occupy different corners of the same intersection, so they can make those draws. They're, you know, I can't really speak to the developer or the business owner. They've done their market studies and identified this site. So when staff reviews it, they review based on UDO requirements, and they do meet all the requirements of the UDO.
And then last thing, I mean, I know there's nothing we can do, but like it's just comical to see the notification hits like barely an apartment, like for the neighborhood to really be made aware of this and if that's a really good use. There's nothing we can do there to notify more surrounding neighbors to make them aware of this. I mean, I know that's the legal requirement, but.
So actually, we go above and beyond the legal requirement. The legal requirement is 185 feet. We actually increase that to 300 feet, as well as post the site and publish in the newspaper.
So again, so I think if I go to the applicant presentation and I look at their overlay, are you telling me that overlay that he's showing me there, the neighborhood? Whose slide had the overlay of, was that your?
That was mine.
Was that staff's or was that?
The, with the blue, the blue bubble?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, that would have been mine.
That's, so you're saying that's extended, but it's still?
Correct.
Right. I mean, I get you're just following, you know, what we're doing and you've extended it. Again, I just, it's hard to say like, you know, what kind of representation that is to the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood and where we want this to go and the stall that's been there. But I guess, and Councilmember Pryor asked some questions about the operator, but I don't know that I, I don't know that that's necessarily a question I want to get into. Maybe something I'll talk about in discussion, but I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Punk.
Quick question, Mr. Head. I did not vote on this at planning on the final recommendation for approval. I did vote prior to on the continuation. I don't know if I need to, if I'm capable of speaking on this part of the application.
Did you ever hear the facts and the presentation on this item previously?
I think we got into the preliminary development plan on the first round, the first time it came to planning, and then we asked for continuance to have it develop some character to the neighborhood.
Gave input back to the.
Yes.
Okay. I would say, given those facts, I would recommend that you recuse from consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions for staff or applicant? Hearing none. Does anyone wish to speak in support or in opposition of this application? If so, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address. Anyone wanting to speak? Hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing and reopen the regular session. Is there anyone, any additional discussion on this application? If none, well, any further questions or comments? Oh, hang on. Sorry, I just saw one. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you. So I'm having a little bit of difficulty with the location of this gas station. I just, I'm not a fan of gas stations in general going. Oh, did you close the?
Technically, we're still public hearing. We didn't vote. Are you okay? You want to make the comment and close? Okay. So let's go ahead and call the vote or get back into open. Y'all go back into open? Right, correct. Correct. All right. So if there are none, then yes, we will go back into regular session. I thought I did that. But that's why I asked, is there any further discussion on the application? So we are back in open.
Okay, so I'm, I'm having a hard time with where the gas station is. I looked up statistics and it says that gas stations, they do bring additional crime, especially gas stations that carry alcohol and vape products. I just don't know that that's, that the people that live in the apartment or that live in that area, I think gas stations need to be very strategically placed, and I just don't feel like this necessarily is. So that's my thought on it right now. Thank you.
Lovell?
Yeah, so there is an existing gas, so there's a couple of things here. So there is an existing gas station. And I may have brought this up a couple of years ago as another gas station was coming. But we had, I would tell you, there are serious issues in our neighborhood with that gas station that we have currently. And without getting into how people operate their businesses, or, and again, I certainly don't know this developer. I don't know what kind of operation they have. Like for me to support something like this, I would actually want to go visit one of their stores or see how those operations are because it does, like even if the building looks good on the outside, the things that go on inside that, that current one there, I mean, the nicknames that we have for it. Again, it's not trying to get anything personal, it's just like, it's almost a blight on our, on that area that we live in. It's not something people enjoy going into. So just, so let's just say like the gas station, like the operator of the gas station is just important to me in what they do and how they operate that business as it is, just to say like, hey, it's a nice looking building and it's going to be gas station. I also don't think there's a need. Like, we have a gas station around the corner. I don't know what adding another one there does for that area. I certainly don't think that was the intended use when we said medical office, retail or grocery. So it's just very hard for me to want to support this because I don't feel like it's a need, and I don't know enough about the operations that go inside it. And again, it's not, I don't, I don't know them, and I'm not trying to make any personal opinions on that. It's just important for me, especially that community and that representation, know the troubles that we've had with that current gas station that's there, to know that, number one, we need another one, number two, that it's going to be operated better than the one we have. Now, we don't have control over the operator and the operations that go into it. I certainly, I certainly also am very supportive of the independent business owner and, you know, the non-chains. But one thing you do get with, with some of the more reputable chains or chains that we're familiar with is great operations. And what I've seen happen on that, that other one, I'm not saying what happened here, but I just can't for the life of me understand how this would be a good use for that space and the need from the current neighborhood that supports it. And so that's kind of where my head's at. If I was going to support it, again, I would have to know more about the operations that go inside it, but it's still very difficult for me to see the need for two gas stations right there and, and not really knowing the operator. So that's kind of where I'm, where I'm at right now. Thanks.
Member Hodges.
Thank you. I would agree with Councilmember Lovell. This space, I have a hard time being okay with a gas station where there is so much. I just, I feel like I, when I was first reading through this, when we got our packet, I was thinking, oh, good, View High. I'm thinking right off the highway, that'd be great, but I didn't realize until I got into it that the exact location. And it really made me pause because I'm thinking, if I lived there, would I want this in my backyard? And the answer is no. So I have nothing, kind of like what Councilmember Lovell was saying, I have nothing against this particular gas station. I just don't feel like that's the right location for it. I'd like to see it further down, closer to the highway. But yeah, I just, I wouldn't want this in my backyard. Thank you.
Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you, Mayor Proten. And I will just echo what Faith said, is that I don't have any issue with a convenience store being there. But when I first got into this, I did think it was closer to that interchange, which I think would be a perfect place for something like this. But that far up where it's at, I just don't think it's, it's ready for a C store there yet. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just have a quick question, Mr. Dunning or Mr. Elam, maybe? And I'm not, I'm not going to question or dispute any of the comments that have been made. But in general, as far as code enforcement, based on some of the concerns that have been brought up regarding this type of business across the city in general, I mean, is there much code enforcement with the different C store type operators?
Ryan Elam, Assistant City Manager, I would have to pull data on individual C stores to really pull that, that data out across. I do know that through our review processes and everything, we do look specifically for C stores for crime prevention through environmental design. So our regulations are set up to help address some of that. But to look specifically at comparing different C stores, I would need to do some, some data analysis on that.
I didn't want to put you on the spot, but just curious in general, how that gets handled across the city. Okay, thank you. I don't see any other questions or comments. I guess it's time to go ahead and have Councilmember Hodges read Bill number 25 dash zero six one.
I advance to second reading, Bill number 25 dash zero six one, and ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for land located at 3394 Northwest Village Park Drive for express stop convenience store, all in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 33, the unified development ordinance of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hodges and a second from Councilmember Pryor to advance Bill number 25 dash zero six one to second reading. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Please go ahead and cast your vote. Motion does not pass. Six. Takes us to, oh. Yes. We, a little bit of agenda management on the next agenda item. Our proclamation group has made it. A little thrown off on the time this evening, but that's okay. Proclamation was read. Can we read it again? So they can, you know, you enjoyed it so much.
Trish is on overtime tonight.
She is. This is the third time she's, third time's a charm. Don't make me smile tonight, everybody. Yeah, have him come up. Yes, please. We'll go ahead and have her read it, and then we'll have each one of you go down the line and introduce yourselves and what schools you go to. How's that? And for the record. line and introduce yourselves and what schools you go to. How's that? And for the record, I'm not Mayor Baird. I'm filling in for him tonight. He's not here tonight, so, welcome.
And even though I state that I am at the end of this, I'm also not Mayor Baird. All right. Whereas the City of Lee Summit is proud to support the students and teachers in our community and the various programs in which they participate and teach, and whereas the Theater in Our Schools Month is a national movement where thousands of students and theater educators join together in raising awareness in the impact, of the impact of theater has on our schools and community. Whereas the theater programs of the high schools of Lee Summit last year provided over 600 students the chance to participate in more than 30 productions, ranging from major musicals to small one-act plays. And whereas research has demonstrated that student performance on academic tests, positive behavior in school, graduation rates, and engagement in community citizenship activities are all better among students in theater programs when compared to general student population. And whereas the theater program, programs have significant impact on the community of Lee Summit, as over 15,000 people attended school theater productions in the city each year, and thousands of dollars are spent at local businesses to purchase products and supplies needed to mount these productions, and at local restaurants for before and after-show meals. And whereas Lee Summit High School, Lee Summit North High School, Lee Summit West High School, Bernard Campbell Middle School, East Trails Middle School, Pleasantly Middle School, and Summit Lake Middle School all present major productions throughout the school year. Now therefore I, William A. Baird, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Lee Summit, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as the Theater in Our Schools Month.
So once again, welcome. And like I said earlier, when you guys weren't here, is that this community obviously loves the arts. Theater is very important for many reasons, just for the reasons that were read on, on that resolution, our proclamation. But also, it sounds like you guys create a lot of economic activity too for the city. So that's kind of cool. So let's go down the list and you guys just introduce yourself and what school you go to.
I'm Emily McKeon and I go to Lee Summit North High School.
I'm Stella Minshaw and I also go to Lee Summit North High School.
I'm Carter Foebert and I also go to Lee Summit North High School.
Micah Hensley, Theater Director at Lee Summit High School.
I'm Anna Burnett and I go to Lee Summit High School.
Hi, I'm Alara Alderson and I go to Lee Summit High School.
I'm Lauren Knight and I go to Lee Summit West High School.
I'm Keaton Bradford and I go to Lee Summit West.
I'm Lydia Miles. I also go to Lee Summit West.
I'm Gretchen Isbell and I go to Lee Summit West.
I'm Jenny Reedlinger and I teach speech and theater at East Trails Middle School.
Kenny Taylor, East Trails Middle School.
Kristy Beaver, Summit Lakes Middle School Theater Director and teach speech and theater at Summit Lakes Middle School.
Nadi Jacobson and I teach at Bernard Campbell Middle School.
Brad Rakers, Theater Director at Lee Summit West High School.
William Palmer, Theater Director at Lee Summit North High School.
Once again, thank you, guys. Very proud of you. How about a picture? You guys want to take a picture? Everybody kind of scoots in a little bit.
Squish in for a good theater picture. We have to do levels. There's a lot of here.
That's teamwork, yeah.
Yeah, they sure are.
See, you guys do this like pros.
All right, on the count of three, everybody yell the name of their production. Ready? One, two, three. Good job. Thank you.
All right, we got it. We got it. See you, guys. Have a good one. Sure, sure. Oh, hang on one second. Hang on one second, students. Councilmember Pryor has a comment.
No, I just, I just wanted to say that I went and saw May We All and Micah Hensley. I saw him, which I've actually never met him, but I saw May We All, I think it was last school year. It was probably the, one of the best, and we go to Starlight a lot. It was one of the best plays that I've ever seen. It was so good. So I recommend everybody, these are not like low-budget films, like, low-budget plays. They're really good.
Of course not.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. That's an awesome way to finish, right? Kind of, as we wind down. That takes us on the agenda to committee reports. Anybody? You guys been meeting? It's been a long month, hasn't it? All right, we all just met, so we'll go ahead and move on. Any council comments this evening? Yeah, we have a couple. Councilmember Level.
Well, maybe just to piggyback off that, that last public hearing, because it's, it's always difficult to, to get in a situation like that. A couple of things that just I thought of, and I don't know if there's anything that can be done about it, but maybe we need to be pulling out gas and convenience from retail, right? And so, and, and just being like, you know, yes, it fits as retail, but, and I, like, when we're, we're going in kind of planning these areas or at least predicting uses, I don't know if that would help. The other thing I was thinking of was like, I mean, I know we expanded that overlay, but it touched nobody, like, in the neighborhood to actually, like, and then we, we advertise in the paper and we, I mean, I don't even know what that means anymore, right? And so how do we, how do we, how do we engage the community? Like, what could we do differently there that, because I guarantee you, you know, like, my neighborhood would have been more, like, I could have, you know, got, there would have been a lot of feedback or interest in understanding that even a little bit further over. So, again, I don't know what you can do because you're still hitting the, you know, the, the numbers that are required. So, I don't know, it just feels like there are times when we do those notifications and it just, it doesn't really reach anybody to get the feedback. And then the other thing was just, like, I think it's, I think it warrants another question, and I don't know if this is something to take to committee, it would probably go to mine, but, like, I think we need to have a long conversation about convenience stores. And I do think the operators are important and the quality, what we allow to go on in those, because, again, you, you can end up in a situation where you've got a nice-looking building, but the operations are less than desirable for a community. And I know that, like I, like I mentioned, that ours has been a struggle and a challenge. And it's not something you really want your kids going into, or, or me really going into for that matter. So maybe there's something that we can do for a little more discernment when it comes to C-stores and, and gas or not. So I don't know. There's, there's a lot there I've said, but I just, I, you know, I hate those situations. I wish there was more ways to inject more logic and less subjectivity. Anyway, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate that. To that point, is that something, would you want us to go back to CEDC?
Yes, what, what do we have the ability to do there? Like, when we're talking about a user and trying, you know, a type of user, and what we could as a city have some sort of bar or, or qualifications for that type of user. And it's gray. It's...
Yeah, Ryan Elam, Assistant City Manager. Yeah, I think it's definitely something that we could look into and bring back what the options are. I think there are likely a couple of different things and some different use categories that we can look at. And we just would need to do a little bit of research to make sure that we've got everything lined out the way that, that we can. So.
Thank you. So staff will look into it, or do we need to assign that to CEDC?
If you assign it to CEDC, we'll put it on the agenda.
Who's acting, Mayor Protim? No, not tonight. Councilmember Level was asking earlier.
I'll sign it to myself.
Oh, okay. We'll get it assigned. I know a guy. So, all right, thank you. Appreciate it. Councilmember Ryder.
Thank you. I wanted to address, I believe, did I, I'm saying it right, Mr. Stitt's public comment. Stitt's, I'm sorry if I said your name wrong. But, but I wanted to ask if Mr. Parks would come up and explain to us again about what's going on over there and then maybe you can get some answers for person tonight.
Mr. Stitt's comments?
Yes, Mr. Stitt's comments.
I'll do my best to explain a little bit, but I've got Mr. Elam to assist. Michael Park, Director of Public Works. So, again, I'll just remind everybody, this is a development project. It's not a public works project. So the city has no contract, no contractual relationship with the engineer, with the developer, with the contractor that's performing the work. The update I received from the Development Center Department is that the, the developer has received all of the necessary easements from the library, and that's what's holding this up, is the recording of easements, and that Mr. Elam has a meeting scheduled to discuss these with developer and what is going on with the timeliness of these recordings so that the work can commence and complete. I think we have all acknowledged that what Mr. Stitt had said with regard to approvals of the permit prior to the easements being recorded is true. You know, we have reflected back and we're making corrections in process so that that doesn't occur again. But we're in an unfortunate situation where we, we don't have a financial security with the developer, so we can't essentially cut bait and do it ourselves. We, otherwise you end up with a situation that just lingers. We can't condemn on behalf of the private development. We have no agreement with them for that type of action. And that in itself is a very, very long process. So hopefully the conversations that Mr. Elam and the developer, Mr. Atchison, have will be beneficial to try to get this thing back on track because I appreciate the disruption and the experience that the public is going through. It, it's very frustrating. It's very frustrating for staff for something that's really beyond our control. And certainly, nothing within the control of public works. Again, we didn't issue the permits either. It's, it's just, but we're in the know and we're trying to help answer these questions.
So the one thing I will add to that is that we know that the library and Mr. Atchison, the private developer, are in negotiations for the easements. They have got everything ready from a permitting standpoint that we're just waiting for the easements on them. The plans have been ready to approve for quite some time now, and I'm aware that they have had easement documents that they've been going back and forth on since at least the beginning of February associated with that. So unfortunately, the situation is that private easements are required between those two individuals, those two entities, on that property around there in order to complete these projects as intended.
Thank you. And then my apologies, I know Mr. Park's name is not plural. It is Mr. Park. So also I wanted to ask, this is maybe a housekeeping thing, and, and so when we do these bills, when we read out the bills, I think I remember that under each bill, it would say what committee it was, had been assigned to. And the last couple of times, I haven't seen any committees, subcommittees' names under there. Am I, am I crazy?
You are not crazy. They're not under there. Public Works Committee was canceled when we were in Washington, D.C. doing our legislative trip. So some of those matters needed to come through in a timely manner. So we placed them on for first reading without them going through a committee since we didn't have a Public Works Committee.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you. So I feel like probably most of Lee Summit knew this was coming at one point or another, but I want to talk about chickens. So I was wondering, there's a lot of reasons I want to talk about chickens, but we've had a lot of people reaching out to us lately, specifically one particular email that was a very good email from District Four. But, and I don't actually know if this is true, but this is something Tractor Supply says, or if it's actually just the truth. But they claim that there's a Missouri state law, an agriculture law, that, that when you buy chickens from Tractor Supply, you have to buy them in a minimum of four. So if you buy four chickens one year and then you want to, like, alternate your layers to have chickens that lay, you know, like what people do, chicken people do. And so, but you can't do that. So like, if I bought four last year, then I have to, or if I have one that passes away and I want to get another chicken, I can't just buy one. I have to buy four chickens. So I was wondering if we could take this back to CEDC and talk about increasing the amount of chickens that we're allowed to have. And chickens are a lot less poopy and a lot less noisy than dogs. So...
I have chickens.
My chickens are quiet. I don't have any roosters, though. But, so I was wondering if we could send it to CEDC.
Sure.
And talk chickens.
I'd be happy to assign that to CEDC.
Thanks.
Guys busy. It's been a slow month. So, sure. Any, any more comments?
Well, so I don't know if Mr. Dunning was going to bring this up, but I wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Thorne because that's exciting on being the Director of Water Utilities, right? Is that right? Yep.
I'm sure Mr. Dunning was gonna... I get two claps tonight. All right. We've got Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. I think Councilmember Level was touching on this. Ryan, when it comes to the C-stores, I know the liquor license, does that carry the same weight in a C-store in our jurisdiction for selling the tobacco products or...
I'm gonna look at our Director of Liquor Control to answer a question about liquor license.
I kind of glanced over to make sure Chief Forbes was still there.
Travis Forbes, Chief of Police. I'm sorry, I was talking to the Major over Animal Control about the chicken ordinance. Go ahead. What was your question, sir?
Councilmember Level was talking about these C-stores and, and how we kind of govern what they sell. When they get their liquor license in our, and I'm trying to think of where I heard this, they know not about, at least some of the other jurisdictions, that their liquor license allows them to sell the tobacco products such as the vapes and stuff. I don't know if that's regulated by us in that same fashion.
They're completely different and distinct, our liquor license laws. And I'm the Director of Liquor Control. I don't necessarily control tobacco, although we do occasionally do operations where we make sure that they're following the state laws with regard to tobacco. Really, the liquor ordinance is distinct from tobacco sales.
There's really no, I guess overall, for, for you and for Mr. Elam, there's no, if it's a C-store, they can sell tobacco products no matter what. There's no, we don't have any control to say they can't put in all the vape stuff and the vaping machines and things like that. No? Okay.
I'm getting a little over on skis about tobacco, but there's no licensing procedure like there is for liquor, which is pretty tightly controlled by both state law and city ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protim.
I'm sure we can have CEDC include that as part of...
Councilmember Level's got some work to do.
Welcome back. County clerk, our clerk, he hasn't been busy tonight, or will be busy. That's right. All right. Before we go to staff roundtable, is that it? Any more questions? You have a question? Comment?
No, it's, no, it's actually not about chickens, but it was to kind of piggyback off of your comment. Are there illegal vapes? So I know that, like, you hear that young people go and buy that, the vape stuff that's like drugs, but is that illegal or is that the stuff that, can that just be sold? Is there any regulation on that type of stuff?
There are age restrictions on, on vapes and content restrictions, as you alluded to. There can't be illegal products and things of that nature in vapes. But that's the operations that we do is to make sure there's no undercover, or, no underage sales of vapes or tobacco to minors. Yes.
How are they all getting vapes in the middle school bathrooms? Like, I just don't understand that.
Pretty much the same way. They, sometimes minors get alcohol too. So it's, you know, it could be a, if we get a complaint about a particular store that's selling those things, we, we look into it, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it? Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Up to six chickens in Lee Summit.
Six?
No roosters.
How many roosters?
Zero.
Zero.
Those are, those are the noisy ones. Just getting that out of the way. So.
All right. Major, what do you think? Good? All right.
All the chickens.
All of them. Bring all the chickens. All right, before we go to staff, I'm surprised nobody's brought up, it's baseball season. Who's going to the Royals game?
Two more days.
He's playing hooky. You guys don't have to raise your hands. Your boss can't see you anyway. So go Royals Thursday. Who's going? I know a few people are going.
You're the only one here on Thursday.
They all raised their hands back there. It's on video. All right, Mr. Dunning.
I'll ask Mr. Elam to introduce our newest member to our leadership team and cover some background there.
Yes, thank you. It is my honor to welcome a familiar face to, to you all. You've seen him get overly excited about things that are buried in the ground and things that nobody really wants to think about, but I share that passion with him a little bit. I think it's pretty interesting, pretty neat stuff, and we're very happy to announce Jeff Thorne as our new Director of Water Utilities. Jeff's been with the city for 12 years, and has been in water utilities the whole time, and has got quite an extensive career in the sewer and water industry overall, and I'd like to have him come up and just say a few words real quick.
Hey, welcome.
Jeff Thorne, now Director of Water Utilities. I'm following into this role a legend in Mark Schoffler. So, it'll be big shoes. That said, we've got a great foundation. We've got water and wastewater master plans in pace, place. We finished our strategic plan. We finished our accreditation, and we've got some, some thoughts going forward to do this. When I took the opportunity to talk to the water utility staff about it, what I told them is the, the what and the why of what we do doesn't change, right? We're here to provide service in water and wastewater, and why we do that is because most of us really love doing it. As Ryan said, you'll, you'll see me kind of geek out about it sometimes, and that's just the nature of it. I'm the guy who goes on vacation and takes pictures of fire hydrants and manhole covers. It's just how it is, and you just, you, you come to love what you do, and in this case, I love who I work with, I love where I work, and it, it, it comes through. It's, it's a lot of fun for me every day. So, I had hoped to have a chance to speak to this, but the one question you asked, Mr. Dunning stole my thunder, so in my first council's meeting, I did not get to speak as an authority on I and I, but I'm happy to do so at length with any of you.
Well, you hadn't been announced yet.
There you go.
Couldn't get ahead of it.
Yeah, that's right. So, I appreciate it, and if you guys ever have any questions or anything like that, please reach out. I'm happy to, to talk about it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
Mr. Dunning?
Two quick things. Reminder of the Prior Road Public Meeting for the Prior Road Design that's scheduled for April 3rd from 4:30 to 6:30 down at Station 7, and then on that same evening, starting at 6:30, may, do, does District 3 council members want to highlight Town Hall?
Where'd you guys get those glamour shots? Those are good-looking photos.
Yeah, District 3 Town Hall from 6:00 to 8:00, so we can make a, a lot of good time out on April, April 3rd with your evenings.
Come on out.
Starting at a, a public meeting and going to a town hall, so that'll be at Lee Summit Police Department Training Room for the District 3 Town Hall.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. No, not, we're not touring the jail, right, Chief? We're not going in the jail. Hopefully not that night. All right. With that being said, I don't see any other comments. Oh, sure, go right ahead.
I just, I just wanted to tell Jeff Thorne that you better be careful what you ask for, because I had Mark on speed dial. I'm serious.
We'll be going into closed session, so we will need Councilmember Carlisle, read us into closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Pursuant to Section 610.0219 of the Revised Statutes of the State of Missouri pertaining to preparation, including any discussions or work product on behalf of a public governmental body or its representatives for negotiations with employee groups, I move this body go into closed session.
Second?
Great, thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Carlisle, and a second from Councilmember Hodges to go into closed session. May I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carlisle?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor?
Aye.
Councilmember Rader?
Aye.
Councilmember Funk?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Lopez?
Aye.
Great, we were, we are now into closed session.